Okay, this work session of the Luray Town Council will now come to order. Will you all stand and join me in a moment of silence, please? Press Councilman Webb, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the law for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Donkman.
Here.
Mr. Bickers.
Here.
Ms. Silver.
Here.
Mr. Charles.
Here.
Ms. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
And Mr. what?
Here.
All right, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir. For your pleasure this evening, town staff have developed and are presenting a recommended FY22-23 budget. The total amount of the budget is thirteen million, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars comprised of seven point three million for general fund, two point five for American Rescue Plan Act funding, four hundred thousand for the CDVG grant for the Luray Meadows apartments, one point six million for our water fund, and one point eight million for the sewer fund. For the general fund, the majority of the funding comes from our real property tax and our VDOT street maintenance monies, followed by meals tax. We are, within your budget is the Memorial Drive project that is, funding is comprised of revenue sharing from VDOT and then the remainder, our share of that is from our reserves, and then solid waste and business licenses. The, where the money goes, it's about equal between the police department at one point five million and our capital projects. Again, that's primarily the Memorial Drive project, followed by our street department and our parks and rec. And then all the other departments are part of that. The general fund is about equal as far as how it breaks down between personnel operations and capital costs. And the seven million in our general fund is slightly increased from last year, again primarily due to the Memorial Drive project. Some of the highlights within your recommended general fund budget. We are able to continue all of our town operations. We have included fuel and oil related increases in the budget, recognizing where we are within the current economy and anticipated going into the FY23 budget year. Funding is also included for the extension of Nichols Road. That is, and exist, there's an existing subdivision there, it's just the road had never been built. So it is the town's responsibility to extend that road as well as utilities, and so there is funding for that included in the budget. We are also looking to improve the town's Wallace Avenue property to allow greater use by our public works department. There's also improvements for the North Alley parking lot located behind Town Hall. And our parks department has, has funding included for Phase One of the guardrail replacement along the Hawksville Greenway, along South Hawksville Street. The wooden posts are in a state that they need to be replaced. And so we've, Jennifer has developed a two-phase project to make that happen. Again, Memorial Drive, Phase Two improvements. And we are, we have been notified by Waste Management that our contract rate has gone up, so we are including a proposed sixty-one cent per month increase for residential garbage collection. Within the water fund, the lion's share of the one point six million dollar budget comes from our customer water sales. We are including a increased amount of facility fees due to the anticipated construction that we expect to continue into FY23. The expenses, it's kind of equally divided between operations, maintenance, and debt service. And again, just due to the nature, the operations are the majority of the costs for where we spend money, and then personnel is a second to that. And this year, the budget has decreased within the water fund. We had included in last year some of the projects that we thought might have been able to be accomplished with ARPA. For the purposes of this budget, we have removed a number of items that couldn't be paid for within the existing rate structure within the water fund, but we have identified them as potential ARPA projects for council consideration. The water fund does include the additional waste, the additional water treatment plant operator that VDH has, has told us that we need. Includes, again, the waterline installation along Nichols Road, a salary adjustment for our superintendent. We are proposing a three percent increase in the water rates, which equates to an eighty-four percent increase in the bill for a single user, a dollar forty-nine for a typical couple, two thousand gallons. A family that uses about five thousand gallons would see about a dollar seventy-nine increase per month. And a commercial customer using ten thousand gallons would see about two dollars and sixty-eight cent increase in their monthly bill.
Hey Steve.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't able to go through, on the superintendent of water, I know I talked about it before. Were we able to go to the full amount that I talked about, ten thousand?
He had requested ten thousand, we were only able to fund within the rate structure of fifty-three hundred.
Okay, well that's just, I would like to see it at ten, but that, you know, that's just my, I'm glad we have something in there, but I just, I know we talked about it a few months ago, it was just something I thought was important to, I saw in that today for a job wastewater superintendent that was local, that seemed to be a lot more competitive. So just, you know, not that no one's gonna go anywhere, but I just want to make that a point, that if that could be done at that rate, it'd make me happy at least, so anyway.
I did talk with the superintendent, and he was appreciative that there was an increase recommended for him. And I did, did let him know that the ten thousand, we just weren't able to fund at this time. Within your sewer fund, again, majority of the funding of the one point eight million dollar budget comes from our, our utility billing with additional monies anticipated to come from facility fees for new development in the next fiscal year. Majority of the expenses are associated with operating our wastewater treatment plant as well as the sewer line maintenance and debt service. And again, similar to the water fund, majority of the costs go towards operations and then personnel. And we are seeing a decrease in the proposed budget this year. The previous two years, we had funded some improvements at the wastewater treatment plant that have been completed. Within the fund, some of the highlights include upgrading the part-time maintenance worker to a full-time operator position. We've included some funding towards manhole lining. We are proposing a one percent rate increase, which was recommended during the last rate study that the town had completed, which equates to a thirty-five cent, cent increase per month for a single user, forty-one cent per month for a couple using two thousand gallons, sixty-three cents per month for a family using five thousand gallons, and just under a dollar for a commercial using ten thousand gallons. As I mentioned, there are a number of unfunded efforts within the budget. In the recommended budget that was presented to you, items that we believe could qualify for ARPA funding are highlighted in green. That's about midway through the budget package that you received. Some of the items that we were not able to, to fund in the recommended budget include a two percent cost of living adjustment. The treasurer had requested an upgrade of a part-time position to a full-time position. The police department had requested an additional patrol officer. The parks department had requested two additional positions. We're also, in a previous work session, Jennifer had presented to council a, an incentive program that she was trying to establish for her, her staff. We would also like to establish a similar program for our public works department, which we weren't able to fund in, for either of those departments. And then some other capital improvements, including some enhancements of the Imagination Station Playground that weren't included in the original program, such as expansion of some of the sales to go over, sunshades to go over, some of the existing parking facility, parking, picnic facilities that weren't included as part of the bid for the playground itself, as well as funding for the East Main Street's, street lighting program. And then a couple of other long-term projects that weren't able to include would be the first phase of pedestrian sidewalks within the boom field that would ultimately allow us to connect the Greenway to Dean Park, as well as some paving of the parking lot here at Town Hall. The main thing that we wanted to talk with council tonight is proceeding to give you all the opportunity, if you want to talk with any or all of the departments regarding the budget as it's been presented, or their requests that were not able to be presented in your recommended budget. We are planning to have the public hearing for the possible tax rate adjustments at your April eleventh meeting. We are in the process of getting that advertised as directed by town council at your last meeting. We have a number of meetings that you can review the budget, come up with any changes or additions that council sees fit. We do have to have the public hearing scheduled by June thirteenth with an adoption at a special meeting on June twenty-one. We can do it earlier, but those are, that is the, the last time that we can get the public hearing in consideration of the budget adoption by council.
I would like to see us come up with funding to at least give a two percent cost of living adjustment. I mean, these are, these are trying times for a lot of people. And I've been doing some research for another jurisdiction on the cost of livings across the board. And a lot, most municipalities are proposing cost of living adjustments higher than this. But at a minimum, I think we should look at two percent for the employees.
So Steve, so we're, there are no new positions in this budget? I mean, we haven't, I mean, you know, with the police and...
The, the police, the upgrade for the treasurer, and the parks and rec. But there is a position at the water plant and an upgrade of a position at the wastewater.
Okay, okay. And does this...
Steve, you mentioned, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Joey, you can go, yep, it's fine.
Hey Steve, you mentioned earlier about ARPA funding, you were hoping that certain things would qualify. Can you elaborate on that? It was my understanding that they created more lax regulations for that, that opened it up for rules.
They have. Again, about midway through the recommended budget, there's a list of the unfunded budget requests and the items that were confident qualify are highlighted in green. If there are other items on that list that council would want to determine if they are ARPA qualifying, we would need to identify them and, and confer with the town attorney and Mary Earhart to see if they, if there is any concern regarding their, their, their usage.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I guess the only question I had, and I'm sorry I haven't been able to dig through the budget. Is this, are the rates, this a budget assumes the increase, the two percent, I mean, the two cents to real estate?
No, sir. No, sir.
It's not including any improvement.
All of your rates in the recommended budget are, remain the same.
Okay.
So if council elects not to do any adjustment to the rates, the budget that's been presented to you can go forward. Any of the additional items that we weren't able to include that are identified as the unfunded, those would be items that if a rate adjustment were to occur, council could then include those in, in your approved budget.
Good to know.
All right, is that, is that all you have, Steve?
Yes, sir.
I guess we need to all go home and study this, and we'll talk about it in our next meeting.
I would like to greatly appreciate Danielle for everything that she did with this, with it being her first year, and she hit the ground running and was able to make this as easy as possible. But herding cats is not a, not, not too far from what she was able to do with, with this budget preparation.
I think it's a very excellent detailed presentation, and I thank you all for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Burke, I think you're still up?
Yes, sir. Next item that council, for council's consideration. Our police department has identified a inadvertent word in Town Code Section 6.6, where the Town Code identifies that putting advertisements in vehicles is against our code when we believe that it was intended to say "on vehicles", because our police department doesn't break windows to put traffic tickets on vehicles. And so I think the intent of this was to prohibit people from putting flyers on vehicles that are parked on, on streets. So the town attorney has determined that we don't need a public hearing for this type of code amendment. And if council's okay with that, we would have you all consider this at your April meeting.
Counsel, any thoughts?
No problem. Well, one thing I noticed with it that's, I think, a bit confusing. The way that's worded, looking at Section 6.6 to revise, it shall be unlawful for any person to put any advertisements or advertising literature. When we say put any advertisements, when I first saw this, I'm thinking of a vehicle that is lettered or striped, or it's a Comcast truck, or it's, I mean, the way that's worded, I know that's not the intent of this, but if you go by the true way that's written, it's saying, it looks as if any vehicle that has any intent, I realize this is designed for flyers, handbills, literature, something of a paper nature stuck under a windshield wiper or whatever, but it doesn't read as that, it's any advertisement.
We can, we can definitely look at language.
I'm not sure what the correct language would be, but it looks as if, and I know that's not its intent.
If you park your van and out, your vehicle in front of big moons, that's all for society.
Yeah, so see, that's what I'm saying, it's like, yeah, if, if that said that, but I mean, really, it's, and I mean, there's lots of stuff in town that is lettered up, you know, the Schulz truck, any of this type of stuff that is advertisement, you know, on a vehicle, and this wording on this is a little confusing.
No, we'll get with, with the town attorney and see if we can get some clarification on that, that's a good point.
Bring that off to the next meeting after we get, let Jason clarify that.
Yes, sir.
All right, Steve, you still up?
Next item for council's discussion. Town has received a special use permit application from Conrad Colby to operate a distillery at 622 West Main Street. That property is located in the business district. The planning commission has reviewed the, conducted a public hearing and unanimously recommended approval of the special use permit. Mr. Colby is here this evening, and he has offered to counsel a tour of the facility so that they can get a better understanding of what he's proposing, as well as some of the limitations that a distillery must operate under, per ABC regulations. There had been some concern by the residents in the area. Mr. Colby, working with Reverend Audrey King at the rec center, had a, in effect, a public meeting with the, the residents. And it's my understanding that it went well, was able to answer a number of the questions that the residents had. And at the public hearing, we did have at least two of the residents that spoke favorably for his application.
And I think Mr. Colby has offered to give the council tours, what were those dates, Mr. Colby?
Whatever you guys have that works, really. I'm a firefighter, I have forty-four hour shifts, but if I'm off, I'll be there working whatever I want.
There's some dates in your emails, Steve?
Yeah.
I can't find them on here, though.
I didn't include them on that.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
That's all right.
I believe they were, well, at, at any rate, if you're, if you're interested, please let me know, and we'll try and coordinate times for y'all to meet with Mr. Colby. We would have to limit it to just two members at any given time.
Just a quick question. If you go to the Google Earth view of the lot, highlighted in yellow, goes back down to that triangle that we're looking at, that donated piece, would there still be a right of way or access to his property?
Yes, sir.
From that back?
Yes, sir. The property that we're looking to, to donate to the living legacy is this area in the triangle. All of this would remain public right of way.
Okay, okay. So then, 'cause where my question's going with this is, the space that you have in front, I see reference to the parking spaces, approximately four spaces there. If, if this is anything compared to the brewery, which I hope it is as far as your success, as this grows or more parking was needed, would you consider, even if it's employee parking or something, making some type of parking in the rear, if you got to that point? Is that elevation or grade there possible to do that?
It's doable, it is a little bit of a walk up a hill, I prefer not to. What I have, though, is I have a lease, we're working on getting the insurance figured out with the caverns for the building across the street and just to the left, that I can park cars over there.
Okay.
So they're giving me a one-year lease to put cars over there, as long as there's no issues, they're happy to go to.
Gotcha, gotcha. That's the only thing I see as a potential concern down the road is, is, as you grow and as it gets busy, the, the situation with parking, so, okay.
With the distillery, it's a little bit different. The brewery, people can go and they can sit and drink all day, whereas with the distillery, I can only serve you a total of three ounces. You can't buy a bottle, hang out and sit. It's really, it's not the night venue, we're not gonna have any bands, live music, food trucks, anything like that. So you can't really sit and hang out like you can at the brewery.
So your customer turnover is pretty quick, or much faster than, okay, gotcha.
Anybody else, any questions for Mr. Colby? We, thank you for being, thank you for attending tonight, being here, and we'll, we'll all try to get together, and maybe you ought to send those dates again, again, Steve.
Yes, sir.
And we'll all try to get some, some tours.
And we will have a, a public hearing scheduled for your April eleventh meeting.
So we need to do it, obviously, before, if we want to, I mean, it's not required, it's just for...
It's beneficial, the, the planning commission definitely benefited from it, and we're very appreciative, Mr. Colby, for making that offer.
All right, Mr. Burke, special use permit 2202, Lodging House, 22 North to Ford.
Yes, sir. Next item for council's discussion. Town has received a special use permit from Bryce Rowland to operate a lodging house at 22 North to Ford Avenue in the R5 Townhouse and Apartment Residential District. The planning commission has reviewed this application, conducted a public hearing, and unanimously recommended approval of the special use permit.
So Steve, on that, is GIS just not updated? Because I see Mr. Alshire still owns it, according to that.
That is correct, the, the GIS ownership is simply lagging. Mr. Earl had indicated that he had recently purchased the property.
Is that the Greg Alshire that just passed away? Was it him?
Yeah, it's not.
Not the same one? All right, and council, any thoughts on that, comments, discussion? Okay, again, we'll have a, we'll have a public hearing in our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, Steve, code amendment, Section 402.8, street names.
Yes, sir. Following your adoption of Chapter 74, Emergency 911, at addressing, council had referred consideration of the amendment to Section 402.8, street names in the subdivision section of the code, to the planning commission to amend the street name section to refer to that Chapter 74. The planning commission did review it, conducted their public hearing, and unanimously recommended approval of the code amendment.
And we'll have a public hearing in April. Counsel, any thoughts for Steve, I guess? Nobody else is here to answer the question? Anybody?
No, I'd be disgusted.
Okay, we'll have a public hearing in April, okay. All right, you're still up?
The Westlue Sewer Pump Station, like that, any of our signs that have a different abbreviation or...
No, sir. No, sir, the abbreviations are fairly standardized by MUTCD. It simply allows, well, it, it gives the town more flexibility and more control, or more involvement in the, the naming of our streets.
Okay, okay, excellent.
I guess, yeah. I'm sorry, Joey, I forgot you were up there, out there, over there, wherever.
Next item for, for council's discussion. The town received four bid proposals for the replacement of the West Luray Sanitary Pump Station. We had anticipated bids in, in the vicinity of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and received bids in excess of one point one million for the project. What we're hoping to talk with council tonight about is the options that we have. We can accept that bid and use fund balance until alternative funding is available. We can accept the low bid and negotiate until we're able to most likely use fund balance as an, until alternative funding is available. We could purchase the pump equipment and issue an RFP for just the installation once the pump equipment is in hand. Or we can reject the bids and look to do something at a future date.
Counsel, any thoughts?
I think purchasing, purchasing the equipment and then putting a bid out for installation's gonna, I think that could be problematic real quickly, from the standpoint of warranties and guarantees on the workmanship. And whoever puts the equipment in's gonna blame the equipment provider, and the equipment provider's gonna blame whoever installed it. So I mean, I'm thinking, I, I think, when you say accept the low bid and negotiate, we would just negotiate to see if we could get better price on that bid.
Correct. We don't anticipate that coming down below a million.
I, I think, I think we should, that's the way we should pursue it. I, I, I think, I think we should, that's the way we should pursue it, and it's not going to get any cheaper. The likelihood of having the equipment available prior to the additional funding is, it's going to take a while to get the equipment.
We, we understand it's supposed to be at least, what, a six month?
Could be December, November, December before, some of the, the home and rail pumps can get in.
I, I think, I mean, I think we better negotiate a little bit and lock it in. I don't think it's going to get any better.
When do we anticipate the rest of the ARPA funds to come?
Near as we can tell, end of June, beginning of July is where, well, let me, let me, let me qualify that. End of June, beginning of July is when the Fed is supposed to distribute, I'm sorry, the Treasury is supposed to distribute funding to the states. The states then have, I believe, 30 to 60 days to then distribute it to the localities. Most likely, it'll be instantaneous.
Okay, so probably this summer, but it wouldn't be able to do the work until, you don't think until the fall or anyway?
They could start some of the work, but the, the main equipment would not be here till...
Would it require like a deposit upfront?
Possibly.
Because we've already put about 500, and what do we allocate?
We, we allocated 530, so we have enough to buy the equipment or to fund a portion of the award if, if council goes forward with that. Yes, sir.
But if I'm wrong, I think where Lincoln's going, we might have ARPA funds by that time to pay the rest of it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think you should have.
Is that right, Lincoln?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if we could just say, look, here's deposit down, we'll pay you the rest when you start working.
Well, yeah, and the lion's share of, of any invoice from them would not occur until, most likely after our...
Likely, we gotta do it, it sounds like, so then...
Do we need a...
No, sir, this would be something that y'all, we can, we would, if, if council's amendable to awarding the bid, we can have that on your April agenda.
And one more thing, is those, I know they got those zoning permits out that Luray Landing, are those fees, I mean, you said something about last time, but are they being paid now?
The proffer fees for the first 32 lots was paid. We have received about $50,000 in the proffer. Three quarters of that would go towards sewer, a quarter of that would go towards the, the water tank.
But they owe a little over $200,000, is that right? For Luray Landing, for those 32 lots?
Once, they have not paid the connection fees yet, but yes, sir, that would be the, the $200,000, but that, the connection fees will probably be paid when they get the homes...
What was the 50,000 for?
50,000 was the proffer. There was, as part of the update to the PND, there was $400,000 to go towards the water sewer improvements, and that is a proffer associated with the issuance of the zoning permit.
Yeah, you've got a total of $351,000 there with everything that's come, that potentially had come in.
Yes, sir.
From the new development.
They pay 1,700 per lot as the lots are sold, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and that's where the...
32 times 7.
Yeah, that's where that 40,000 has come in.
They're not getting water until they pay the...
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it won't come, right?
As they want to dig oil.
They got a bond up there. All right. I guess, new the ARPA update?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to present council with where we were as far as some of the, the purchases that, that have been made, were, as far as just actual versus the planned, were about $70,000 to the better on the items that were ordered, so that would be funding that would be available to council for other allocations in the future. Our water plant superintendent is pursuing some grant funding. We learned today that, as typical with grant funding, the advertiser doesn't get into the details. The, the grant is based on the state's ARPA allocation, but the state has determined that they would not award the grant until 2024. So it is possible, what we are, what the, what Joey is looking into is also if the water meter project would qualify, if we're looking to do some allocations of, to go towards the, the pump station at West Lu, if there is state monies that could go towards the town's remote reed water meter project, that would effectively allow us to continue with that project with an, an alternative funding source. So we are looking into that.
These items listed in the staff summary here is, these have been ordered?
Yes, sir.
Wonder what the sewer camera came...
Well, what we, what we were able to identify, they actually sell camera equipment that can be mounted into the town's existing van, and rather, the, the bulk of that that we had anticipated was having to buy a new vehicle to go with that. So by Lynn and Brian being able to identify that the vehicle we have can operate with this new equipment, we were able to, to save a, a good bit of money.
Awesome.
And kind of tooting Brian's horn, all of the equipment that we've purchased is able to be operated by drivers that don't have a commercial driver's license, so anytime anyone wants to volunteer to, to drive the street sweeping equipment, that is available to just any member of the town staff.
You're looking to council? You don't, you don't want that.
So Steve, that's all we've spent out of the two and a half million?
No, sir, we, there's, there's been other things, but these were the, the ones that, well, how did I do? Some of the items that we've, that council has approved were vehicles for the police department. Unfortunately, we don't know when they're going to be delivered, and unfortunately, we don't know if they will honor the 2022 vehicle prices. That's been part of Brian and the chief, and Jennifer and Lynn's problem, is that the, there aren't enough vehicles to go around, and the, the dealers are trying to figure out how to, I don't want to say they're trying to figure out how to make the most money, but anyway, the vehicles aren't available, but they're stringing us along, saying that, yes, the order's there, and we might honor the order. And so we have to play the game of keeping that original purchase agreement in play so that if vehicles are available, we can...
Are we purchasing these to the state contractor?
Yes, sir. And unfortunately, there's just not enough to go around, so it's, it's Virginia and nationwide. Everybody, everybody has ARPA money to spend, it's, and unfortunately, the car manufacturers have had issues manufacturing cars, so that's where we're at. The earliest we anticipate the chief's vehicles would be November, and that's only if they honor the, the purchase orders that we've put in.
When did we order?
Three, four months ago.
Yeah.
We just, we took them again for July. I've got two trucks waiting for, one for public works and one for parks, but I ordered April of 2021. Took my last one here, somebody here.
So those items have been ordered, we just don't have prices to present to y'all, unfortunately.
All right, anybody, any questions on the ARPA update? Comments? Thoughts? Steve, we'll move on to the out-of-town water, 107 Patriot Way.
Yes, sir. The town has received a request from Ashby Marshall to extend water service to their property at 107 Patriot Way, which is located outside of the town limits. It's located just north of Cave Hill Road, beyond where General Drive ends. Lynn has, has investigated, they requested one-inch service. We can provide installation of a, a water meter within the Cave Hill right-of-way, and Mr. Marshall has identified that he does have the right-of-way or utility easement to extend a one-inch line from his property to our meter. So as for our code, council has to confirm, has to grant the extension of, of water service beyond the town limits.
Is a one-inch line unusual for residential or...
It would, it's unusual if your home is within 20 or 40 feet of the road. His home is probably a good, I don't know, third, quarter mile? So the, the likelihood of not having pressure at the home because of that extension, if you were to go with a typical five-inch line, is significant. So we did convey that to Mr. Marshall, and he did agree that he would prefer to, to go with the one-inch line, just to make sure that he had adequate pressure at the home.
Do we need to approve this?
That would be at your, your April meeting if council is...
All right.
...amendable.
Mr. Steve, anything else?
No, sir. No, sir.
Do we have anything? All right, we don't have any, think, I don't have any cuttings or anything scheduled, do we?
Jennifer will probably have a grand opening of a, a new, new playground in, in April.
It's exciting, so, looking good.
Huh? The Burke Mart?
Yeah. Playground that's got like a little...
Oh, yeah, hey!
It's called Burke Mart.
There's, 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 there's no family, unfortunately, with that, and... Jennifer might be able to get you some, some t-shirts and hats.
All right, that's all I have. All right. We're adjourned.